Half a day, the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation of Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, July 15th, the time now is 2:02. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, July 8th, and then on July 13th, and again, today is Friday, July 15th, 2022, and the time is 2:02. The bill that will be addressed this afternoon is Bill 325-36. Introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, Senator Clint Regel, Senator Jim Mullen, and Senator Jose Pito Terlay. An act making revision to the General Fund and GMHA Pharmaceutical Fund for the operation of the executive legislature and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, making new appropriations establishing miscellaneous administrative provisions. The fiscal note for Bill 325-36 was requested on July 7th, it was received and disseminated to all centers via email by Committee on Rules on July 12th. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 325 are invited to the panel. We have Mr. Sidhri Linsangan, Mr. Jose Chargalov, we have Ms. Lilian Pasadas, Mr. John Benaventi, and Lester Carlson from BBMR. Testimonies shall be submitted to the committee, please provide my ladies and staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies may be read, and lengthy testimonies should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions, or for additional testimony may be desired by the members of the committee. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance of the agenda. We're here to discuss Bill 325-36. Personal inference... Excuse me. Personal inference into the character or the motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted, will be restricted from providing oral testimony, and will be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure the microphone is on, they are speaking through the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to thank my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. We have Speaker Theresa Lai and Minority Leader Senator Chris Duennas. I will read now my opening statement on Bill 325. Buenos and half a day colleagues and to the people of Guam. Bill 325-36 COR is an act making revision to the General Fund and GMHA Pharmaceutical Fund for the operation of the executive legislature and judicial branches of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, making new appropriations establishing miscellaneous administrative provisions, which establishes the program Azuda para Itautauta Energy Credit Program. As the government revenues have exceeded the adopted fiscal year budget at almost 85.7 million, as reported by BBMR in the May 2022 consolidated revenue and expenditure report, my committee had to find ways on how we can give back to our people, which we came up with the program Azuda para Itautauta Energy Credit Program. Our goal is to appropriate 25,312,000 of the excess revenue to deliver this program that provide some relief with the rising cost of fuel that is out of our control. This program provides equal playing field as it does not have an income criteria eligibility. This energy credit program will provide each Guam Power Authority residential and commercial account hold with $100 credit towards their monthly bill for the month of July, August, September, October, and November, for a total of $500 per account. The bill will increase the revenue for General Fund through the business privilege tax by 25.3 million. With the increase in the BBT, my committee also took into account the provision that GMHA, Guam Memorial Health Authority Pharmaceutical Fund would have to increase by 6.19% of the total amount of the BBT, which is a total comes up to 1.5 million. The rising cost of fuel and the cost of living on our island have caused families to face difficulties with stretching their pocketbooks, and I hope this program Azuda para Itautauta Energy Credit Program will offer relief, allowing families to put food on their table. I look forward to hearing the testimony and feedback on this measure to help strengthen the bill in its effort to help our people. Sizouz Maasi. We will now begin testimony from Mr. Sidhri Linsangan. Sir, you'll be first, followed by Mr. Chargalov.
Good afternoon, senators. It's always good to be back. Whether you support my testimony or not, the real judges here are the people of Guam. Mr. Chairman, I support this bill, Section 21, but with some clarification or amendment. My concern is the 50,624 residential and commercial ratepayers or customers. My question is, does it include the people with multiple accounts? Out of these 50,624 accounts? Because there are some people that have, like for example, one person have like 10 GPA accounts. So will they be receiving credit of 500 for each account? That's why I will support this if there's no exemption from GPA to not to include them. Because just like I said, there are persons that have two accounts. Maybe GPA's interpretation is to only give them credit for one account. You know, some people got five accounts, you know, like under their name, under GPA accounts. That's why I would like to clarify this 50,624. Does it constitute all the persons that have multiple accounts? Or only one account for every person? Because if only one account for every person, that's unfair. Because the person is also paying power. And, yes, and the 25,312,000 will be appropriated. So I hope that it includes or covers those persons with the multiple account. And so we need to make some clarification or amendment so that GPA will not restrict or not pay those people with multiple accounts. Okay, and yeah, this is a good bill, but to me, it's not good enough. Because how about the GWA rebate? Because this only covers GPA rebates. How about the GWA? Because sometimes the water rates are more expensive than power. The problem with water, we cannot see the leak. We only find it after one month, and the rate of water only goes to $900 sometimes, or 800, higher than GPA. Not like the GPA or our bulbs. We can see that if it's on, we can turn it off. Or the air con is running, we can turn it off, but not the water leak. That's why I would recommend that you also include on another bill a GWA rebate. Because the 25 million is small money. Very, a tiny fraction compared to the American Recovery Rescue Act funds that was appropriated to the government of Guam. And in fact, there's still like what, how much, less than 300 million sitting down? And they said it's been reserved for the hospital, but we don't even have a justification from the US Treasury. Because before, it's not included. Where's the letter from the US Treasury that they approve it? That it can be used for the hospital? Because those funds are specifically for the people, for the people's hardship and the business hardship. Like for example, installation of sewer to all the residential, and so many other things. That's why to add another rebate for GWA is a tiny fraction. So I highly recommend that you introduce another bill for that, Mr. Chairman, that only GPA, and made some clarification. Because just like the last time, the hearing officer said, oh, OPA is is an independent institution free from court interference. But how come you're applying the court rules if they are independent institution? It relates to the IRA funds too. We need to see some hard copy documents from the US Treasury. How did they come out and prove that it was really allotted for the hospital? Because right now, we have so many issues. Because once you put those three buildings at one land, there are going to be heavy traffic. You might as well divide all the buildings at different places. That's why, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. That's my main concern, is there needs to be clarification on the persons with multiple accounts. Because GPA might not include it. They might pay only one account, you know, for every person. So it's very unfair. And then introduce a bill for GWA rebate. You can always figure it out, there's still a lot of money sitting down, you know? That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll consider your additional bills to introduce. Mr. Chargalov, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. The Honorable Senators St. Augustine, Chris Duennas, and Amanda Shelton, I believe, and of course, the Speaker, Senator Theresa Lai. And good afternoon, Senator Telo. I'm here today to present my oral testimony. It's simple, but it's detailed. Good afternoon, Honorable Senators St. Augustine, Joe St. Augustine. Thank you for sponsoring this very important bill, in parentheses, 325. And to the senators who co-sponsored this bill, please allow me to thank you for your support of this bill, 325, that Senator Joe St. Augustine have legislated to provide the $500 rebate, power rebate to residential and commercial ratepayers. I am Jose St. Chargalov, a resident of Inolahan. A residential and a ratepayer, I am experiencing higher utility bills as Guam Power Authority and Guam Water Works increases their rates for residential and commercial ratepayers. I find myself compelled to appear here today for several reasons. I retired after 32 years as an administrator for the casework and counseling services division of the Department of Corrections. As a retiree, I am on a fixed income and manage to support my families. Currently, I have financial obligations such as house mortgage, medical bills for Guam Memorial Hospital, and GRMC. I was routed to the Naval Hospital due to a heart attack. For three hours emergency treatment at Naval Hospital, I incurred a total of $14,026% daily interest compounded, which amounted to $26,000 to pay off within 60 days. I had to pay off this amount to avoid more costs to this medical emergency. I was then routed to GRMC and incurred another bill for my stay and treatment as I was discharged four quarters after my hospitalization, which amounted to $57,000, and partial payment was made by the insurance and had to make payment by installment on my share. For my follow-up treatment, I had to go to GMH for another surgery for my heart attack and stayed four days the treatment recommended by the doctor at GRMC. The hospitalization amounted to $52,000. The insurance coverage had to be paid. For my share of the balance, I had to make partial payment, which I currently owed the hospital. To all of you honorable senators, pressing, I am an employee of the current administration of the Honorable Governor Lou Long Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Justin Ori. I am grateful for the opportunity to be working at this time after 32 years of retirement. Without this employment, I would be in dire situation financially to be paying for all these increases of the power, power, in parentheses, water, and other financial obligation as I mentioned earlier. In summary, I am thankful that the Senator of this 35th Guam Legislature will understand the only reason that I am in support of this bill and on my testimony and pass this bill. I trust that the governor will not hesitate to support and sign this bill. I thank you, Senator Don Quiluna Sizouz Maasi. Can I also make an additional comment? Based on the fixed income, I retired senators back in 1990. Back then, at 1995, we were given the supplemental of 4,232. During the Guterres administration, that supplemental was in partial reduced by a sliding scale in which, as of today, this year, I don't receive a penny. So this is also experienced by probably less than 3,000, counting back. Initially, the number of those retirees that were given that compensation, I believe the number was 12,000 to begin. By the time the Senator led, Ben Pangolinan was working on it, it went down to 6,000. I have not done my research with the retirement, but I'm pretty sure that probably from the 6,000, probably it would be less than half surviving. So these are some of the concerns that I address to my fellow retirees. Example that I mentioned is the hospitalization. As you grow older, you don't know what to expect. I am not putting myself in the similar situation with other retirees. But this is also my thoughts on it, because they have called me. And for your information, as I mentioned, I work at the governor's office. And part of the solution that we address to the rising cost of power, many of the residential powers had to be terminated, and they called for help. Thanks to the general manager, Joe Benaventi. I frequently contact their agency, and we had managed to have them reconnected and have some type of a payment arrangement, because the rising cost of power and water is thus way beyond their financial means. Thank you, senators.
Thank you, Mr. C. I'd like to also recognize my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. We have Senator Frank Blas, we have Senator Amanda Shelton, and Senator Telo Tyree. We will now proceed to Ms. Lilian, Lilian Pasadas first, and then John, followed by John Dandester.
Thank you, Senator Buenos. First of all, I apologize, I don't have a written testimony. I did not have a chance to put together, but in my thoughts, and I am here in person on behalf of the Board of Trustees, and on behalf of the executive management team, and the medical staff, and the employees, and most especially, on behalf of the patients that we serve at the hospital, I thank you immensely for putting this bill together that then will allow an increase of pharmaceutical funds to help the hospital with its financial needs. So that's my testimony, plain and simple, clear. Sizouz Maasi, it will really truly help the hospital with this additional funding. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pasadas. Mr. John Benaventi from GPA, sir?
Thank you, half a day, Mr. Chairman, Madam Speaker, Senator Lai, Senator Shelton, Senator Duennas, and Senator Blas. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in favor of Bill 325-36. Guam Power Authority supports Bill 325 specifically the program Azuda para Itautauta Energy Credit Program. Just as we are recovering from the two-year global pandemic, the world has been thrust into an energy crisis. Fuel prices have increased exponentially, affecting every sector of the world's economy, including energy production in Guam. In December 2021, low sulfur fuel oil was $85.27 a barrel, and ultra-low sulfur diesel was $95.34 landed Guam. Today, heavy fuel oil is $103.53 a barrel, and ultra-low sulfur diesel is $164.64 per barrel, representing about a 21% to 71% increase in fuel oil prices. It is a welcome relief to see fuel oil prices dropping some over the last two weeks, but these small price drops do not appear to signify significant reversals in fuel oil prices in the near future. We're becoming less dependent on fuel oil as we introduce more renewable energy and battery storage to the island's power grid. In addition to the 25-megawatt Dandan solar farm and the 40-megawatt battery energy storage to address intermittency, the new 60-megawatt Kepco Mangilo farm has been operational since last month and is now providing savings to ratepayer and is part of the levelized energy adjustment clause. This solar farm will reduce our annual dependence on fuel oil by 250,000 barrels per year. Guam's renewable energy portfolio is expanding. However, the need for reliable, resilient fossil fuel power generation in Guam is necessary, as has now becoming evident across the mainland. The groundbreaking of the new Okudu Power Plan, which will reduce GPA's annual fuel consumption by over 500,000 barrels per year, is scheduled for next week. Thank you, Senators St. Augustine, for your tireless effort in getting GPA the necessary legislative approval to commission the plan in 2024, resulting in a significant reduction in reliance of fossil fuel and its erratic prices. GP also thanks the legislature and the governor for their support on the legislations. We applaud the bipartisan support of this bill that will support power utility ratepayers. To ensure that the intent of the legislation is addressed, an adequate appropriation is provided. Please see the following estimate of residential and commercial customers. I know that the following demographics include potential new customers over the next six months. So again, we itemize this based on July 15th, actually today's number of customers. We have postpaid customers, those that receive a bill and then pay thereafter. We have prepaid customers, those that actually have to load up their account so that they can continue to have power, you know? We have net metering customers, and there's also private streetlight customers, all considered residential or commercial customers, you know? And that total is about 50,854. And then we are growing at a rate of about 600 to 800 new customers per year. So again, that's, I estimated for six months, about 400. So the total, again, potential, and I say potential, is really for your consideration and understanding as to the full realm of our customers, you know, is 51,254, which if that is the desire, the legislature will result in about a 25.627 appropriation. Again, GPA has also internally been having meetings and preparing standard operating procedure necessary to implement upon passage of Bill 325-36. We will be working with Director Burns of the Department of Administration, so BBMR, on this SOP to ensure that when Bill 325-36 does become law, we can implement the mandate as quickly and effectively as possible. We will provide you a copy of the proposed SOP early next week to your office for your review in order to avoid any unintended consequences resulting in the implementation of this program. I appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony in favor of Bill 325, and GPA is committed and will work with your office and the Department of Administration to ensure the financial release is delivered equitably, transparent, and without delay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lester Carlson, I know that we have Mr. Blas from GPA and Mr. Burn, but I think only the BBMR director will be testifying, sir? Unless, John, do you have anything?
No, no.
You got it covered, okay, Lester? Director of BBMR?
Good afternoon, senators, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And thank you for recognizing the tag-team role that Mr. Burn and I usually provide to the legislature. We are here today in support of Bill 325. We note that the intent is all-inclusive, and it differs significantly from some of the aid packages that we've been able to roll out using ARP money. The ARP money is income-restricted. This measure is for everybody, and we could certainly support that. The last CRER that I provided shows us about $85 million in general fund over the adopted level. A sneak peek, not to be used as a final, but just as indicative of where the next CRER will be when we deliver it July 20th, we're at least $10 million better. So you can use $95 million over-adopted as a point of discussion for general fund revenues. Our fiscal note makes a couple of points. One, the amount that Mr. Benaventi identified as being necessary in the bill has, by his testimony, risen slightly. It's, you know, not a whole lot, but it's a slight increase. But the appropriation from BPT is insufficient to be able to provide both the pharmaceutical fund injection and to cover the needed resources for this relief program. And our fiscal note basically says that we need to raise BPT by $26,982,198 to then net the amount that was initially provided for in Bill 325. And that will result in an increase to the pharmaceutical fund. And that net increase overall will be $1,670,198. And again, it's an operation by law of the BPT. Anything from the BPT that is adopted, immediately 6.19% is directed to the pharmaceutical fund. That's by statute, and I think that was the one issue that we pointed out with our comments on the fiscal note. The other thing that we did in the fiscal note was remind the senators that there are a number of bills that have been proposed that take 22 excess revenue, and in totality, those that have been introduced to date amounts about $132 million. There is one bill specifically that appropriates funding for an income tax rebate, and that's the largest one. It's Bill 321. But we have funded the LEAP program out of 22 revenues, and we've done a couple other appropriations. But by and large, if the body is willing to provide broad relief to both residential and commercial customers, the means are here, and we support that simply because there's no disparity, there's no haves and have-nots, there's no "I got mine par, par, did you get yours?" kind of situation. It would be a very magnanimous gesture of support. We all know that Mr. Linsangan comes here more often than not opposing these types of measures, so I was pleasantly surprised to hear him say he was in support. And to his concern about GWA, we do have $12.8 million in ARP money set aside for GWA rate offset. The problem is that the PUC hasn't acted on GWA's rate case for a long time. And last year, when we provided rate offset money to GPA, that was already a done deal. So we prefer to act and use ARP money to offset a GWA rate increase once the rate increase is actually effectuated by the PUC. If there are any questions that relate to the cutoff on aid that has been utilized for all RISE, program in Solapi 1, 2, and 3, and all the other ARP-funded relief measures... for All Rise, Program Salapi 1, 2, and 3, and all the other ARP-funded relief measures for residents, Mr. Byrne has that information. Again, we're here today to discuss and to lend our support for a broad, no-exceptions relief program to all GWA customers, residential and commercial alike. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Um, I'd like to read a letter I received. It's kind of in support, but maybe wants to make an adjustment. Maybe GPA will be able to answer this. This is from the Lupan Cove. I'm trying to provide input, public input in the above proposed legislation as the manager on behalf of board of directors and the 214 owners of the residential condominiums units at the Lupan Cove condominium in Tumuning. This is in support of your proposed legislation, and more specifically, in Section 3, a new Section 21 is hereby added to Chapter 11 of Public Law 2, 36-54 regarding the GPA Residential Rate Payers Rebate Program. However, subject to clarification of and any need to amend the language in this section as to what constitutes the definition of a residential customer, it's not clear from the language in this section whether the proposed credit is per cus, is per customer meter, or if this also provides for customers served under a respective meter as in the case of master meter facilities with multiple end users, individual family units. It's not clear that what the 50,624 GPA customer base is based on. Is it, is it, is it the actual GPA meter count, or does it include customers that are, are actually provided with power under the actual meter inclusive those served by a master meter? Residential customers in a multiple single family dwelling complex that receive power under a master meter fashion should, should be considered individual and eligible customers, not simply the recipient of billing for the one respective master meter that merely act as the billing conduit for the multiple end users served. I realize the credit would have to apply to the actual meter count, but it should be factored in such multiple based on actual number of individual apartments that are serviced under respective meter account. GPA should have the capacity in its database of master meter customers to make that determination. Pursuant to PUC's creation of the condominium service schedule D, GPA Docket 20-10 in March 2021, Lupan Cove elected to be built as a residential condominium, which it has operated under since first occupied in 1973, but not built as a residential for instance, master metered customer under GPA Schedule D for our 214 units until March 19, 2021. While we are a master meter complex and receive one bill, our utility costs are borne proportionally by all 214 individual apartments. We set our, out our budget each year, January and October for the following year. At present, given our average consumption per unit of 1,107 KWH per month, this translates into a monthly power bill of 61,620 as of January 2010, 22. The power bill with the same consumption under the increased LiAC result in billings averaging 73,000 through June. July's billing expected to be 80,580, and beginning November 2022, the monthly power bill will reach 101,910,000 per month, all with no increase in consumption. A total of 2022, for 2022, our sochin will be overbudgeted just for power costs alone by 210,000, not, not yet factored in, in and our utility costs that will eventually have to pass through their cost of providing service due to their respective increased power bill, billings. The only option available for, to us is to keep paying our utility costs, is to assess, tax the unit owners accordingly. I want to ensure that the provisions are in place, or if not, the amendments be included in the proposed legislation with the direction to GPA to address the fact that master meter condominiums or multi-family residential living complex afford the same parity for the rate pair assistance as that of any other residential, single-meter customer. In our case, it is hoped and, and expected that the multiple of our 214 individually-owned apartments are given this due process consideration. All the sponsors in this proposed decision to assist Guam repairs are applauded. I trust that all your colleagues in the 36 Guam legislation, the governor and Governor Longo will act in all, in all due has to enact this legislation for a small application. Every available dollar that can be effectively used to offset further burden on Guam public is needed and appreciated. Sincerely, Gleyton Duval, Manager. I think that's, that's a testimony from a Lupan that was also addressed by Mr. Sinfret, Sinfret Linsana. And maybe GPA can answer that in reference to the master meters that are out there, because I know there's, there's quite a few out there that have it. And I'm just curious, as you identified in, in your testimony, you had, uh, identified, we identified 50,854 that because of the potential additional customers next month of honor, and then maybe the numbers will grow because of that. And I'm just curious, is that how is that worked out with GPA?
The, the data we have and the information is really by account, residential, commercial account. And yes, Lupan Cove is correct that there are really one account. There's only one master meter, and of course, as, as, as they are saying, they have 214 individual apartments within that condominium, no? However, none of them have an account with GPA. It's really just one metered account. So that's what you see in the numbers before you. We have no way, or we have, uh, we have no way to confirm that, and maybe the best way, if the legislature is considering all that additional, to, to look at every, every unit serviced by that one account, and there are several, several condos in this situation under the condominium rate or so, then perhaps having them certify how many units are there and provide that to us and at the direction of the legislature, that could be accomplished that way. But under our present scenario, each one is an, an account number, and I like to say active account number. This number will vary. Next month, there'll be terminations for one reason or terminate their power, some people add on, no? So it's a fluid scenario, and that's why I was saying even the bill, and even the, the information I provided you, Chairman, is the active accounts, no? As of July 15, right? So again, if, if you are considering to add those additional, then perhaps one way is we can get them to certify, the condominium to certify the officers or what, to certify that this is the number of units, and then we will utilize that and provide you that additional data so that you can make the addition, additional appropriation as necessary to cover that. So that is possible, Mr. Chair, and, and I thank them for bringing it up. It was one of our thoughts, but again, we were going to itemize a lot of this thing and provide to you, as I mentioned in the SOP, so that there is really no unintended consequences, and that's what I mean about, we want to make this bill go forward, everyone's on board as to what it's supposed to do, and then we will implement it immediately, no?
All right, thank you, Mr. Beneventi. And I, I think that answers, Mrs., this is not an ask, an ask, okay, a feedback, just want to cover that question you asked her, bring parity, and that's what we focus on with Mr. Beneventi.
And as per the other question that was mentioned, every, if a particular person has 10 accounts, then those 10 accounts are all here, because each account, like he's saying, pays a bill. So it's already inclusive in here. The one that you're bringing up in the condo is something that we have no count of, but we could get that information through some effort between the condominiums and ourselves, and certify so that we can give you adequate numbers, no?
Yes, and, and I thank you, Mr. Beneventi, for making that statement, and, and because the people of Guam I know are watching this, I would hope that the folks like Lupan Cove are providing that certification, because if any of those tenants were to cut off, and they're not there, and there's no 100, there's no 214, but there's 200 only, there's got to be a certification, it's got to be measured on a monthly basis so that we're not just providing the, the, if the bill was to pass, providing the assistance, and there's nobody there. No, everybody's got to be accounted for. Mr. Lester, Carlson, sir?
Yes, along those same lines, sir. If a agreement between a landlord and tenant includes power at a set rate, and the tenant provides a landlord with $900 a month for a studio apartment with all utilities, then I believe that there's no need for drilling down too deep into those cases, because the active meter is under the landlord's name, and we, we don't want to be able to be in a situation where simply because somebody has rent in, or power included in a rental agreement, that they're a beneficiary of that. It, it, it's, it gets like really dicey when you start to look at what goes in like a river and then spreads out into tributaries, you know? We're looking at relief for active customers, both residential and commercial, and that's, as Mr. Beneventi said, it could be quantified relatively easily. Some of the other factors, while, while they may be, it, it might just be a contractual agreement that, that is already covered and maybe precludes us from considering that relief just because of the contractual nature.
Yes, sir. No, I was going to comment that one. Could most of these folks have a, a year or two-year contract, and they're ready, there's commitment there, and making the adjustment, it's going to be, it'll be one hell of a monster. I'll proceed now of my colleagues to ask question, um, beginning with Senator Duñez, you're first to show up. Sir, do you have any questions for the panel?
This is my, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank everybody who made it out today to make this presentation and allow us to present the questions. Mr. Beneventi, has there been a transfer of any or any type of rate relief that's been provided to GPA through ARP funds?
I think we receive, was it last year, $50 million from the, the government to, to, what do you call it, offset the power bills then, one lump sum. And perhaps, I'm not sure, as to the details as to where it came from, no?
Okay, but maybe, maybe what I'm looking for more first here is the details from GPA. How did you use that revenue? How was it applied in terms of these savings or, or two, how was the offset applied?
That was, that was offset by the, the increase was offset by the $15 million. So instead of programming us to recover, say, $30 million, we reprogrammed the rates to recover 15 million after taking away, after getting the payment for the 15.
This was under the?
It was set into the rates.
For the LiAC?
LiAC rates, yes.
Okay.
So this one is more to the billing account directly for, you know, each and ten, each user who manages their own account, which actually kind of, in my opinion, kind of a creative, creative way to, to show the, the customers, no, that there is relief being specifically for the power bill.
But, Mr. Beneventi, all accounts were affected by the LiAC not being adjusted upwards of 15 million, correct?
That's, that's correct. It's per unit of LiAC, so some accounts that were used a lot more get, you know, are, were more affected than those that use less, no? So yes, but it is on the unit cost of the LiAC.
Okay. So the, the reason why is I want to establish this question that, and thank you, Lester, for recognizing that you have your partner here, DOA, so I'll, I'll address it, and then maybe one or both of you can answer this question. It's been mentioned several times that the ARP could not be used for this proposed program. Can you give us some detail as to why? If $25 million were available under ARP, we couldn't administer this program straight away with ARP funds instead of the general fund? Because what I'm looking at here, under the construction of this bill, looks to me like a supplemental appropriation, which is the right way to do it, as opposed to what happened before, I think, with the, with the LEAP. Of course, the LEAP was a share. It was a total of 50 million, shared 25 million with a local appropriation, 25 million from LEAP. So I'm just trying to understand the reasoning behind why we couldn't use 25 million from ARP for this program.
Thank you, Senator Duñez, for that question. ARP money, under the final rule, is generally designed to be directed towards what the Treasury calls disadvantaged populations. In interpreting that rule, they went on to say the disadvantaged means basically that the benefit should be means tested. So for instance, you know, for the program Salapi, there's a means test based upon household income for that benefit. Likewise, for the assistance programs that we are currently paying out now, for the rental assistance and homeowner's assistance programs, that there are income limits that are, that are specified for those, for those particular programs. This program is not means tested. This program is designed to be appropriated to everyone regardless of income, as it's written here. And for that reason, it would not be possible to pay this out from the ARP funds.
Is that based on your interpretation, or did you write to the grantor to request a clarification?
That, that is based upon our understanding and interpretation of the rules. Treasury has told us that they will not respond to any request to interpret the rule. They will respond if they think we've made an error, but they will only do that in arrears.
Do you consider the LEAP having been a means-tested program of assistance to businesses at large?
That came under a different part of the, of the final rule where there was assistance given to businesses.
Okay. Account holders here are businesses.
Right. It, it was means tested to, in a sense, because it was related to the loss of revenues. This isn't a loss of revenue either. This is just a cost subsidy.
I just, in my, maybe it's just my thought process, but in my thought process, I think of just the title of the program itself, The American Rescue Plan, and I believe that what we're attempting to do here is rescue our people from...
Yes, the title would, the title would suggest that, but the 200-plus pages of the final rule kind of make it difficult to interpret it that way.
So this is basically your, could be considered then a best guess, if you will, in terms of interpretation?
Well, that's putting it kind, kind of thinly, if I ever made so. We, we...
If I may, sir. Mr. Byrne has submitted numerous reports to Treasury on the dispersment of ARP funds. Nothing has been flagged to date in our reports to the Treasury as required. I will state that the, the funding was one of the first dispersments from ARP. It was in August of 2021, when everything was still very, very tightly controlled, and we, we were firmly of the belief that rate offset, not rate mitigation. If it was rate mitigation, we'd be talking about a whole different thing, but it was a rate offset that was ordered by the PUC. So all we did was to alleviate some of the rate increases in August of 2021 so that the rest of, you know, your income could be dedicated to more pressing matters. So we, we believe that, having reported two or three times since that period, that the expenditure wasn't flagged, and we intend to do the same thing with GWA once the... the expenditure wasn't flagged, and we intend to do the same thing with GWA once the PUC acts to mitigate, not to, you know, offset completely, but just to help. Because if the PUC comes up with, I think it's 10 and 10, or 5 and 5, or something like that, it's going to be a, it's going to be a, you're going to feel the increase if it's not offset. And in a pandemic situation with the new variant outside that is, you know, more than likely going to be hitting our shores if it already hasn't, cleanliness and accessibility to water is paramount. So we, we're, we're looking to disperse those funds as soon as the PUC acts to, to help mitigate that rate increase.
And, and I completely understand that, Mr. Carlson, and I congratulate and commend the fact that we are in such a proper tracking in terms of not having any of those things flagged. That's why I'm kind of trying to lay out the story here that the offset of the 15 million that was, obviously it wasn't flagged because I'm sure it was reported, was applied across all accounts. So the offset of that LIAC, a business not means tested that could be extremely profitable right now, that's paying a power bill that was benefited from the LIAC, is the same person as the person on a lifeline rate in public assistance housing, in terms of the LIAC not providing for that increase. So six of one, half a dozen of the other, I mean, seems to me, even if you recorded it as a $100 credit monthly, and still an offset, because there's, I believe there's two more increments prepared to come forward on the LIAC. What I'm trying to get to here, Mr. Carlson, because we all have, all the people have wanted an explanation of how we manage these resources. And we are looking now to appropriate unaudited, oh, wow, yes, being very favorable in terms of BBMR and OFB's recognition here. We're still doing a supplemental appropriation during the fiscal year. And as you stated yourself, of course, we're going to have to be responsible about first-in, first-out expenditure proposals, but we are oversubscribed at this point. And we'll be going into a fiscal year budget next month whereby we will be accounting for up to $30 million in pay raises for education. We're going to go down the line to where it's going to look to where we'll be appropriating to the levels of this current unaudited surplus. So what I'm trying to do is, while we all have to answer these questions to our people, is to get a definitive reason as to why, if there is a definitive reason as to why we cannot use ARP funds for this when the precedent has been set. And so that's, that's the purpose of this line of questioning.
Thank you, Senator. Again, we didn't remove the rate increase, we offset it. So there, there lies maybe a comfort area for you, where I think, Graham, you might want to help me, whatever it was in August, you know, let's just say it was supposed to be 30 million, the $15 million injection was an offset to the full rate increase, such that these, GPA didn't have to effectuate the entire PUC-approved rate because we were able to offset it. So there's, there's, I understand exactly what you're talking about. I understand what you mean, but if we were going to go down that path, it would, it really would result in two classes of recipients, the haves and the have-nots. That's, that's why I'm very supportive of what this measure does.
See, Lester, I don't see it that way, because the thing is, it's about accounting. Okay? If you took $15 million and gave it to a rate offset whereby the rate wasn't, wasn't increased by a certain amount to reflect the LIAC because of the fact that, that was still, that was, that was actually kind of means tested to usage. In a situation here, if we transferred ARP money to the tune of $25 million to GPA and they recorded it as $100 per account for five months, I don't see the difference. That, that, that still does not discriminate one or the other. It's per metered account. And so, like, that's why I try to say, I mean, if you do your comparison of six of one, half a dozen of the other, you're still transferring the same amount of money, you're just doing it through a different means here where people are going to look at their power bill and it's going to say for the next five months, due to this general fund revenue recognition for GPA under the law, under, under supplemental appropriation scenario, we are going to ensure that for the next five months, the estimated cost, and I'm sure that's how our good friend John Beneventi would record it, I would get my bill as a regular monthly and I'd see that $100 as per public law, blank, 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 in the bottom line, my usage would still be the same. If I was supposed to, you know, pay GPA $600, it's going to be $500. I don't see why, since we've had this benchmark and tested process of putting the 15 million over there, we can't put 25 million of ARP. Or maybe we come up with a scenario here where we're trying to preserve the general fund as much as possible, we do what we did with LEAP and we make it half and half, make it $12.5 million in appropriation and continue to use ARP money as much as possible so we can preserve our general fund. But what I'm trying to say is, is that since the precedent has been set, I don't see any reason why it's a matter of accounting that the money that's available subject to this is going to be recorded one way or the other, because I'm sure GPA is going to have to account as well when we do our report for the $15 million under ARP, that it was an offset to a LIAC that was proposed at this, which would have been an aggregate of $30 million total, but the 15 million offset that and the accounting shows that only 15 million was recorded in terms of the LIAC recovery. I'm sure that accounting has to exist, otherwise, Mr. Byrne, that would be one hell of a response to try to not have a true dollar auditable figure from GPA. I'm just, I'm just trying to say, I mean, I, we're going to debate the bill, I think we'll be asking these same questions. I'm sure when the emergency session is called, we're going to have committed the hole and we'll come back. So maybe we digest this over the course of days between now and then. But I just, from my perspective, I may be wrong, I see this as a matter of accounting. And when I go out and have to explain the usage of general fund resources locally generated when some people think that they should get a straight rebate to themselves and figure out how they're going to manage their expenses versus this opportunity, which still will be a great opportunity, we'll have to make a decision whether or not this was the right way to go or, or if it was available to use ARP straight away. So I'll allow my colleagues to continue this line of questioning, but to me, it's a matter of accounting and maybe that's my remedial understanding, but I think it still stands. This is Massey, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Speaker July, and you'll be followed by Senator Shelton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone who came here today to testify, Mr. Targalov, Mr. Isanga, and all of the directors. All right, I guess along those same lines, I also had the same question. We used ARP for GPA before to offset the LIAC, 15 million. We also used ARP for the program in SALAPI, and the findings in those executive orders are directly related to gas prices. And they include, whereas gas prices fluctuate regularly based on numerous factors, including the increase in crude oil prices. Crude oil prices have risen 13% in the past months. Nationwide surge in gas prices, national average up 97.2 cents from one year ago. It can reasonably be expected that the rise in gas prices will inevitably lead to a rise in utility prices that could further impact the ability of many in our community to get back on their feet. And, and then it goes on. And in furtherance of our efforts to revive our economy and help our people get back to work and to enable those in our community hit hardest by the COVID-19 pandemic to meet the surging prices at the pump, I have directed this program in SALAPI. So, yeah, that's my basic question is, if it was okay to use ARP for rising gas prices through this program in SALAPI, and it was okay to use ARP for GPA in the past, why, you know, where now the governor during her State of the Island made a comment. Quote, "GPA tells us that its fuel costs spiked because of a world on the edge of conflict, not COVID-19. For that reason, federal law does not allow me to use pandemic funds to combat a non-COVID-related emergency." But we just used COVID-related funds for GPA and we just used COVID-related funds for gas prices. So my specific questions are, I mean, obviously, I don't like, I don't like that rationale if it's good one time and it's not good this time. Can we use the ARP funds to cover the business portions of this $100? As you said, Mr. Byrne, the businesses are covered by a different section of the ARP. So could we say this is additional assistance to businesses and cover the $100 per business with ARP funds?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I hadn't considered that, but it might be considered. But of course, that is the smaller amount of the amount that's being contemplated here today.
Sure, I'm trying to save the local funds usage, right, as, as much as possible. And if it's, if ARP can be used, that's the goal for me. So, and also then can we use ARP funds to cover the $100 for each rate payer, residential or business, no, we're residential now, if they are deemed, you know, households disproportionately affected by the pandemic, just as you did with the program in SALAPI?
Well, in order to do that, then we would actually have to engage in another round of means testing, which, which I really don't think we want to do. One, it delays the whole thing. And I can tell you, people have had to work really, really hard at validating these means-tested benefits. And also, you know, you, you might end up with, because it's over five months, you would have to make a determination at the beginning because people's circumstances might well change during the course of the, of the benefit.
All right. But that would technically, those two would technically bring the amount of the local funds that we would need to cover the rest, right? That would bring it down and then we would have, and we would, but I understand, I don't want to delay them receiving this assistance either. But is the issue, Mr. Beneventi, with $100 in credit, is there anyone with less than a $100 bill in power?
Yes.
Yes, residences?
Yes.
There are many?
Let me see. Give me a few minutes, I calculated.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I need a little more time to figure that out, but I do have a demographics of all the 500 kilowatt hours, 750 and everything. And so, yes, there are, some are less than $100, yes. And again, the other way, the other one that did mention here is prepaid customers. These are like your prepaid phone you have to load up. So I have no idea whether those, some of them only use 50 or whatever. So it's very difficult to come to that. That's why they, we always try to say, based on an average of 1,000 kilowatt hour, instead people will be less, you know, more, so that's all.
It's hard to imagine with the recent increases, like two, two times now, yeah, so many people have come up and told me about their particular bills. But, all right, I guess why I'm asking is because, yeah, I mean, is that the issue that if we cover the, if we just cover the LIAC or the increase, or 100 per household in LIAC, that it, that some of them wouldn't, I don't know, it, if you give me a credit today or, right, for this month, am I able to carry that over if my bill is less than $100?
Yes, you do.
Yes, right? So there's no harm. Okay. So, yeah, my questions are similar to, to the minority leader. It's, it's this use of ARP was totally fine before and now it's not fine. And, you know, every dollar that we take away from ARP, these local funds just prevents us from using it elsewhere. Okay, so let me just clarify a couple of other things. So the last tax refund report, and I know that there are just some press releases issued recently, but the last report said that there is still 33 million tax refunds processed or returns processed awaiting payment, $33 million liability. Does the current appropriation cover this amount? Mr. Byrne? Or should we set aside some money to cover the rest of the liability in tax refunds?
I'm not really sure where that number came from.
From the report. You know, they send the reports to us every month.
Yes, I saw that it came.
This is July 1st, 2022?
I, I believe I downloaded it today. I don't know what the, what the validity of that number is.
Well, it comes from your report. It says 32.34 million, that's refunds, refund returns processing, awaiting payment plus the interest.
That number, you know, it comes from DRT, so I'm speaking off the top.
Comes from what?
From DRT, not from me.
Right, that's correct.
But it includes the suspended and returns under, under whatever investigation they're doing. So I really couldn't comment about how many of those returns are going to be paid out or not.
Right, what this says, no, these are done. These are processed, awaiting payment. So this, these are not still waiting to be investigated. These are awaiting payment now. This is a liability that they report. So anyways, that's, that's the question. Does the current appropriation for tax refunds cover this liability that they are acknowledging? And I want to know that because we're, we're talking about how much we're setting aside from the FY22 excess, and I just want to know if any additional amounts from the FY22 excess needs to be, you know, set aside or just to ensure that that's still available to pay for that 33 million in tax liability?
Yeah. Madam Speaker, as I said, I don't understand that number. I've just got the amount that's going to be paid out this week, and it's like 4.6 million, 4.8 million. So I, I don't know where that number comes from.
I'm telling you, Mr. Byrne.
I, I know it's on there.
It's from the report.
But you're asking me a question and I can't, I can't compute that particular number.
Well, when you say you don't understand that number, you do understand the reports, right? I mean, so these are valid reports, right? Or are you saying you're questioning these reports?
That's something you'll have to ask if you don't mind the Director of Revenue Tax.
All right. Well, I'm assuming that she's submitting valid reports and when she says there's a 30, $32.34 million total liability, which includes refund returns process, awaiting payment plus interest, that that's valid? Anyways, yeah, that's the question. Let's assume it's valid, Mr. Byrne. Does the current appropriation for tax refunds or the current set aside for refunds cover this much?
As, as far as I know, the present amount set aside is, is okay. But if I may, perhaps I could look at that, that report.
You're saying, so the current set aside was enough to cover everything you've paid so far plus this 33 million that liability is still showing?
Yes, but I, as I say, maybe I could look at the report and find out where the 33 million comes from.
Sure. No, just, you can just have it. Anyways, it's the report that they sent to us, it's up on Messages and Comms, I'm sure you have it. So that's one question I just, because we've got a list from BBMR of things that we should consider when we're talking about using the remaining FY22 excess revenues, right? And that he's estimated, BBMR has estimated 132.5 million in potential appropriations that, you know, different ideas, people want to use this excess money. And I just want to ensure whether, whether all of the tax liability has been covered. That's one. That's not clear. And then if this... if this, oh, Mr. Beneventi stepped up. If this $100, forgot what they call it, the $100 per customer is put on there, is that, do we need to include language, such as the language in the executive order that says this is not income to the customer? This is not subject to local income tax? Or, that's one thing I would like, I guess, answered before we, we hear the bill in the session. And, okay, the, the other question I have is, so we're here trying to decide whether we have enough to appropriate FY22 excess revenues. It looks like we have enough, whether this is the best use of it. I, I support the use of it in this way, but I'm trying to push that if the ARP funds can be used in this way validly, that that should happen first. And however, you know, it's uncomfortable for me that we're talking about this excess FY22 revenue. We still are waiting for the FY21 numbers to be confirmed. It's almost the end of the FY22 fiscal year. Do you, I know the audit is not released yet, do you have an estimated date on that? FY21 audit?
Yes, Madam Speaker, the audit report will be dated July 13th.
13?
13.
Thank you very much.
Which was last Wednesday. And the, the actual process is that both the commercial auditors and the OPA has to submit it to their validating bodies. But it's, it's already, the, all the representation letters, all the documentation has been finalized, and the audit report will be dated July 13th.
Okay, so July 13th, today's July 15th, so when do you think we will see it?
That's in the hands of the OPA, you know, it's left me, it's in the hand of, of the OPA, basically.
All right, have you seen it?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I hope so. All right, so we would like to, I would like to know if, what the excess ended up to really be in FY21, what it was used for? And if we were correct in our estimates of, you know, what would be left?
It's, the, the numbers being reported are the same numbers that was in the governor's press release, that there was a surplus of 31.9 million in the general fund.
Oh, I must have missed that press release, you're saying a press release on the audit?
A press release was issued three weeks ago saying that the sub, the, the numbers were subject to audit, but these were the numbers that were going to be reported.
Okay, yeah, but you always say those are subject to audit, so.
Yes.
31.9 surplus for FY21 is pretty much confirmed now, right?
And that is what is being reported in the audit also.
All right. Okay, and then, so I, yeah, I'm, I'm looking to see that, to just see, so what was left? Surplus, was it then used or not? Like, this is after paying everything deficit?
That is the surplus for the year, so the accumulated surplus, because there was a very small deficit, is 30, the accumulated surplus being reported is 30.5 million.
Okay. 30.5 million accumulated surplus for FY21? Okay, then, okay, the other question was, so the, there was a press release today, I think, about, or recent, oh, wait. I'll wait for that airplane. All right, so we, the legislature appropriated 25 million in FY22 excess revenues already for the LEAP, the LEAP program for businesses. And that was supposed to be a match to the ARP use of 25 million. But the press release today says 60.3 million was paid. Does that mean that additional ARP funds were allocated towards that program?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The, all right, I asked you that. So,
You want to know the number?
Pardon?
Would you like the number?
You said 60.3 in the press release?
Yeah, so you, the ARP report for, that we submitted July 5th for June, the LEAP number was 37 million, So the match, that was the, so there was an overmatch.
Right.
From the LEAP.
So ARP put 37.6 instead of 25 million, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Could I just ask GMH, Lilian? The, so the pharmaceutical fund's going to automatically increase if we increase this revenue projection, right? And can you just tell us the recent, I mean, sorry, the current appropriation from the pharmaceutical fund for the current FY22? Have you received all of that already? Is, and have you used it? Is there a shortfall, or could you just tell us a kind of an overview of that right now?
Okay, thank you, Speaker, for that question. We have received a total so far of 11.4 or 11.5. We get on an average every month, in a very timely manner from DOA, 1.2 million. So we've been getting that.
All right. And it's supposed to be used for pharmaceuticals, obviously, drugs and other purposes? And so, is this enough then? I'm just getting an update on your, your budget on that, in that regard. Has it been enough?
It helps because, you know, the pharmaceutical cost now has gone up nationwide by 20%. So, yes, pharmacy medications have gone up. The cost of medication have really gone up by 20%. So whatever money, whatever funding we get, certainly we use it, so thank you.
All right, so it looks like the, the bill would need to be amended to change the amount going to GPA because according to GPA's testimony today, they're, they're looking at at least 25.6, right? 25.6 plus perhaps 400 additional, that's not accounted for right now, but 25.6. Anyways, we.
The, thank you, the information I provided is really the demographics of all the residential customers now, and including commercial customers. And again, this is the, and also there are different categories there. And that's really a policy goal on the legislature, if that's the intent is to provide all of this. Just one added information, the testimony this morning about, this morning about, not this morning, this afternoon, about the, excuse me, this is not my prime time of the day. I, I can admit to that, okay? Early in the morning, talk to me. But when we talk about the condos and the additional, like 200 per one condo, again, you may be talking, I guess, right now, which I can provide, no later, by Monday, it's probably another 2,000 units, no? So if you're talking about numbers and potential, then you may look at another 2,000 units there, no? In addition to this, so that's 2,000 times five, no? That's another million, million dollars if you're going to cover that. So again, I'm providing all the information for your policy goal as to how you would like to provide this, no?
Thank you. So my concern is, as Mr. Lisangin said and, and Mr. Targalov, yeah, people on fixed incomes are not able to adjust with the, the recent increases, right? So they have nothing, they have no increases on their revenue to cover those increases in power. And it's very worried, I'm very worried about that because I don't want people to become homeless because our power bills were unaffordable. And we've heard, I've heard just, just on the streets, just people telling me they've seen raises of $100. That was, I think, two months ago, and then again this month. So that's $200 over three months, right? That's huge, maybe, I don't know if that's average or not, or you're saying, you're, but I guess what I wanted to ask you is, so this bill would cover $100 of their bill for five months? It ends in November. What do we intend to do after that? Because I still think we're going to have the exact same problem. Especially if we don't use ARP money and we're using our local revenue, then we won't have this local revenue available to bail us out at that time either? Or, yeah, and I don't, you know, maybe except for teachers and law enforcement who are getting raises. We're not sure when any other raises will be coming through for the private sector or those, I just don't see that happening. So I'm just concerned. So the congressman in his address had suggested that GPA utilize commodity trading advisors, commodity trading pools and reprogramming, or, well, commodity trading advisors or commodity trading pools. Has GPA considered any other, those things or any other measures to, to reduce the LEAC? Continue to reduce the LEAC permanently or as we go forward?
And let's backtrack a little bit, no? This huge increase in, in fuel prices really began around January of this year, compounded by other world events, including Ukraine and everything else. So here we are in this position today where the rates have to substantially increase, no? So prior to that, we, and so we will look into, again, is it an opportune time to do something like that? We don't know yet, we are engaging our consultants to evaluate this. This is what I do know, is that we, and I don't have the number when and when, we're, we utilized hedging before.
What?
We have utilized hedging before, commodity, which is kind of what it's called. And we lost a lot of money. Okay? So it's not a, and of course, in this business right now with the, you know, you really have to be on top of it to, so it's a risky business, and we don't have any cash. We're, we've, we put out all the reserve cash that we have into helping the customers so that we're like 30-plus million dollars behind in, you know, in our cash reserve, right, typically? And we are now faced with a situation where, just this morning, I'm talking with our CFO, how do we pay the next tanker of oil that used to be 15 to 20 million? Now it's in the 30 to 40-some million dollars, see? So this is the scenario we're faced today. And yes, we will look at it. Again, PUC and CCU has looked at this and worked with us in that. But again, it's not an easy fix, and right now, we don't have the cash to make those investments, no? To such, so it's something, again, I'm not throwing out the window, but it's not, it's not a saving grace for the community and what is needing today. So that, that again, is just what I, I believe we are.
Thank you, if the prices go down for, for fuel or oil, will the LEAC go down in the next five months? Or are these set already by the PUC, and we're going to see these prices no matter what?
Okay, good question, Madam Speaker. First of all, GPA's petition is for a three-step increase.
Increase?
Three-step. First one, July 1st, 25 cents. Next one is September 1st to 29 cents. And the third one is by November 1st for 32 cents, no? To keep us whole or recover some cash so that we can maybe continue to pay oil, right? The PUC approved step one and step two, July 1st and September 1st. We are holding back, and they, and they have held back, told us to hold back on the, the third increase until we hope and we believe and, and pray that, if you will, that fuel prices do come down and we can make an adjustment at that time, no?
Is that a finding that if the fuel prices go down, we will, you will decrease?
Probably, probably by, probably November. If it drops substantially to where it was before January or before January, then of course, we, that adjustment will be made. And again, PUC and ourselves, CCU will work very diligently to make that happen. The recent pricing you're seeing in the pumps, it's not really helping us at this point. It's good that the trend seemed to have come down, but we've seen this again, just in the past several months. Trend comes down and all of a sudden it shoots up. It's not the first time we're down to like 95 cent, $95 barrel WTI. And then all of a sudden, we're up to 110 again, so, you know. So again, this is the, I think the PUC and CCU did make the right decision to, okay, hold back on the third so that we can make adjustments as necessary by that. And you're looking at somewhere, looking at that somewhere in the, around the October, November timeframe, no?
All right, what, what, there's a bigger impact to individual customers doing it this way than giving, giving the 25 million to GPA to cover the LEAC? Is that why we're doing it this way?
I think both would help the customer now, is to, we specifically, you know, it's really, again, you give $100 to those that consume less because they're less able to, and I, I don't want to get into a policy code, if you will, I'll just give a slight opinion of how the numbers work, right? Well, that means that the lower-income person has money to be able to afford the power bill, no? And the higher income, $100, the commercials will have some impact, right? But, you know, it's really, it's really the business that has to handle that concern, see? So, but administratively, to be able to make, give it to each individual so that it really takes care of specifically their power needs, then this, this program really helps to, to accomplish that. And they see it, that it is helping them individually. And that coupled with perhaps managing their, managing their consumption, you know, because we all going to have to cut back somehow, right, to afford these huge prices, then that will help them manage. So I think, you know, like I mentioned earlier, I think it's a creative way of making it happen for our customers.
Well, I'm sure that the individual consumers are trying to manage their consumption, and that's why I'm asking, you know, is GPA, what, what do they have on the table to manage this increasing LEAC, right? Like, are your advisors specifically, you know, experts in the LEAC? You know, the oil prices or any way to combat that? When you talk about this hedge, is that different than like bulk buying when you think the prices are good?
Yeah, the problem with bulk buying is that you only have so much storage, right?
Yeah.
And so what we try to do is maintain no less than 30-day supply. We only have 90-day storage. So we will buy, yes, the best we can here, and then use that coming down. Because we can't just go out and buy 10,000 barrels at a time. We have to buy one, one, what you call it, shipping, ship of oil of about 230,000 barrels at a time. So again, we're limited and constrained as to, you know, by the infrastructure and the, and the shipping. So we do our best to, to make that happen. In fact, we're looking at that now so we can hopefully see whether we get a fine tune on the price. Or secondly, minimum, you know, let, give us enough time to bring in the cash to pay for the next shipment of oil. So we are working very hard, Madam Speaker, to accomplish that. It's just like, again, GPA has put out over 30-some million dollars of its reserve to buy fuel to keep the rates lower. But now we, unfortunately, the prices are higher, so we need more cash to be able to buy the next shipment and all of that. And certainly, we don't have much cash for anything else, no?
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that more in another time, but my last question is for BBMR. But my last question is for BBMR. So does the, in the fiscal note, you outlined the public laws that have already been passed tapping into this excess 22 revenues. And there are three public laws. There are many bills not yet passed that want to tap into those revenues. But you don't list here the recent pay raises for the 16 million for law enforcement, 10 million for teachers. And I just want you to confirm on the record that that is not going to be needed from the FY22 revenues, excess revenue.
Thank you for that and thank you for the timely question because there was an announcement from DOE the last couple of days that the US DOE not only gave the 22 raises, but a $5,000 retention bonus. So the first answer is the teacher raises will have no impact on FY22. The second response is to law enforcement.
Can I just clarify that it's going to be paid out of ARP, right?
Their ARP, not ours. DOE's ARP.
DOE's ARP, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So so no budgetary impact for the budget that this body basically puts together. And the second question is law enforcement raises. If you look at the ARP report, you'll see that there's no movement of money under public safety. That money is earmarked to be able to take care of the raises in 22. And when we submitted the 23 budget, we incorporated the cost of law enforcement personnel in the 23 budget by department. So moving forward, those costs are captured in the budget. But there will be no 22 impact on the general fund for law enforcement or teacher raises.
Thank you to everyone on the panel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. And you'll be followed by Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone for being here today for your testimony and for the information. Mr. Beneventi, in your testimony, you lay out the number of residential and commercial customers. Can you break those down for us?
Oh, yeah, again, thank you. The question is, can I break down? And the way it works is all of the 51,254 that I have in the bottom, which is potential. And again, this is not including the approximately another 2,000 customers from the condo, right? Based on the testimony today. So postpaid are those that they, we give them a bill and then they pay thereafter, right? And that's 46,634. Then prepaid are those that are like the GTA with telephone, you you load up and then so on and so on. The same thing with energy. Then metering are those customers with rooftop solars and all of that. And then private streetlights, again, private streetlights by individuals in the component, right? That's a total of 50,854. And then we are growing at a rate of about close to 800 customers a year. So if the intention of the of the legislature to include those group also. So we yes, I estimate about 400 over the next six months will come into that. I can break down this further to commercial and all that. And I I will provide that no later than Monday to the committee. Off the top of my head, I think there's about 5 to 6,000 commercial accounts. So if you subtract from there, it's about 46 residential and about 5 to 6,000. But I will break it down for you.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to those numbers. One of the concerns that I shared with the chair early on when he introduced this bill is that there perhaps would be a way to help commercial consumers in a different way. Now that we know that the there was an increase to the LEAP. Is there a way that we can further match the LEAP from the general fund? Or instead of paying this amount to commercial customers to increase the length of time to our residential customers and help our people who are really struggling? We've seen lots of help to our business community and not as much to our 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 residents who who are really the ones crying for help. Just as the speaker said, we have constituents every day telling us how much they've seen their power bills increase and how this is a huge burden for them that they don't, they don't know what to do. They don't know what to do right now. And this is a crisis for them and we want to be able to respond accordingly. So if that means increasing the length of time from five months to something longer, as the speaker mentioned, what are we going to do after the five months? Or are increasing it in some other way? We'd like to see how we can potentially help our residents a little bit more. So I appreciate that information. I look forward to seeing all of you in the committee of the whole in a few days.
Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and to the panel. Thank you very much for being here today. I I'd like to go back to the line of questioning with regard to the initial, the the $15 million. Mr. Carlson, there was a conversation about, I guess, the language that was utilized between offset and mitigation. Can you go ahead and and clarify what you meant by that? I mean, how, what did that have to do with the initial $15 million that was provided to GPA?
Thank you, Senator Blas. My recollection and Mr. Beneventi or Mr. Botha can chime in or correct me or admonish me as necessary. In the very, as I mentioned earlier, I believe we got the ARP money in July of 21. This disbursement to GPA was done in August, one of the very first ones. There was a looming rate increase that was before us. And there was a request from GPA to be able to offset that because we were in the thick of COVID. And we reviewed what it was that the total amount was and how this would help alleviate some of the burden. And we felt comfortable that utilizing this in an emergency situation in in the, you know, it was, it was pretty bad still in August of last year. That we felt comfortable with releasing $15 million so that it wouldn't burden people unnecessarily with the rate increase and it would make some of the pain of closed businesses and our recovery a little bit more bearable.
Okay, so you had mentioned the words mitigation and offset. And that there was the need to utilize one word over the other to be able to justify, for lack of a better term. Remember, so what can, can you go ahead and repeat that or expand on that?
Sure. If if we were going to eliminate the rate increase, then that would have gone across all of the commercial and residential customers, government and Navy. Because there are four classes of service, if I'm not mistaken. And we're only talking about the civilian class here. We're not talking about GovGuam and we're not talking about the Navy. Is that correct, sir?
That's right. I believe the it was applied to the LEAC so that went across all the civilian, all the civilian rate customers, even even from the government. It didn't apply to the Navy because the Navy before the LEAC is only consisting of the of the non, non military customers.
So the, so the request, as I recall, and again, it was back in August, was to offset. And I think that's the word that we use here is offset some of the the increase to to make it easier to digest. And that's kind of what we're doing here today. We're not paying everybody's power bill. We're just making life a little bit easier for people. And I think that's something that we can accomplish. I'm comfortable with the general fund being able to provide this relief. And the fact that it's broad based, I'm also comfortable with. I will, I'm very happy that, I don't know what happened, but if it was voodoo or soju or something. But when the legislation that for six months reduced the liquid fuel tax, we have seen this, you know, like first, you know, the the next day, gas went down by 18, 19 cents, right? And there have been subsequent reductions, most recently the other day, just another 15 cents. So I don't know what you guys did, but whatever you started with that match, you created a fire. So God bless you guys, you know, maybe sometimes, maybe, maybe there's more to what it is you guys do here than people realize sometimes.
Okay, well, then let me go back to this. There was the difference between the mitigation and the offset.
Okay, Senator Blas, you and I, we've known each other for a long time.
Right.
So let's just, let's just call it what it is. If the rate increase was this, did $15 million eliminate it? The answer is no. It was an offset. In other words, there was still some pain.
Okay. I'm just trying to find language that can come from, okay? Obviously, I don't think you're going to find anybody that's going to oppose. We all know and and we all have to recognize that there's basically two pots of money that that are seemingly available, okay? And I, for one, you know, I really would like to be able to see this being, you know, passed on to the consumer as well. But it's it's a matter, I guess, of, you know, what part of money can be best used for this? And what is the operative language necessary so that it can become, for lack of a better term, eligible? Because I think the concern here that that was expressed by the governor was the was was the eligibility, if you will, of the utilization of of the ARP funds. You know, to be able to provide this offset, if you will. I I appreciate and acknowledge that this was done previously. Granted, it was specific in as far as the, you know, with with regard to the LEAC. But there are certain things that continue to exist that I believe also continue to make it eligible. I don't, this body has no force or effect other than request and beg to be able to use the 25 to take $25 million from the existing American Rescue Plan Fund so that we can utilize, so that we can have another conversation with how we can use this $25 million to to again, continue to help our, you know, our community for projects that are not eligible for ARP funding. And so I'm just trying to find that, you know, that that means and that, you know, that 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 language that that can help to provide that. You know, along those lines and and I appreciate the dialogue that we've had here because I really have not found anything that was different other than, you know, you know, one was because of the impending LEAC charts and this one is now it's it's hitting a square in the eyes. And, you know, thank you to the governor. Whereas one was, it was cognizant because we were in an emergency situation. I think she extended the emergency situation for another couple of months here. So we are still in, so there are, you know, there are still all the similarities. The only difference here is that it's going, it's utilizing this part of money as opposed to another part of money. And so I would rather have a conversation on being using the $25 million to find other ways we can help the community. And still be able to provide them the five, the 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 offset, if you will, for for the power. Second, you know, so I I think that in this conversation, you know, there's, I know now there's, there's more conversations that need to be had. I know, you know, with 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 the possibility, the hopeful of convincing the governor to be able to use that. I I I also like the idea of, you know, we did it with with the LEAP program. You know, if we can do 12.5 from or 12.6 from 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 this and 12.6 from the ARP, you know, that's 12.6 million dollars that we can, that we additional that we can use for the community. Okay, and then that's what I'm I'm looking at here. Along those lines, but and I appreciate the, I guess, the fiscal note that was provided. I I saw something here that I, this jumped out at me because it says here that there was an appropriation to DOE for $25 million for LEAP. And it is utilization of the excess funds. Am I reading that right?
Yes, you are.
What authorization did you get to, did the administration have to use the excess funds?
Public Law 36-65 is right there in the paper.
Public Law 3065, as I read it here, says from the general fund.
The BPT is part of the general fund, sir.
Yeah, but if that be the case, then why are we having this conversation here? To increase the budget by $25 million? If we're asking for permission here to do this here, why? What happened to the permission that was necessary to do it with the LEAP?
The body passed the authorization.
The body passed general fund. The body passed general, and the 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 understanding of the general fund is what was appropriated to the general fund as a result of the monies, the the revenues that were anticipated with the general fund.
That's correct, sir.
We did not anticipate nor there was a language in 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 the LEAP law that anticipated an excess of $25 million. It said, get it from the general fund.
You're, you're, you're absolutely correct, sir.
Yeah.
There should have been, by operation of the legislature, an adjustment to the revenues when the LEAP bill was passed, similar to what you see in Bill 325. The 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 most transparent operative method should have been what it is that you see in 325.
Okay.
The what what happened with the LEAP and the body passed it, there was no, you know, adjustment to the revenue. This one does it. And I think, you know, you you kind of live and learn. I understand where it came from. It comes from the bottom line. This, this one here, it comes specifically from BPT. Therein lies the windfall, the benefit much needed, much appreciated, you know, by the hospital. But you're absolutely correct. There should have been a very similar format that the legislature presented the bill to the governor for signature in Bill 214, as I see now in Bill 325. But the bottom line is I understand it's there. You understand it's there. This just makes it more apparent and transparent.
Hang on, I think. There's nothing in Bill 325 that basically affirms that, though.
We're talking about two different subjects, sir.
Yeah.
If if you wanted to clean it up and make an amendment to the first few pages to reflect what the legislature did with respect to not only the $25 million, but the rollback of the liquid fuel tax because there was $5 million given to DPW from the general fund. So I I believe you're, we're, you know, saying the same thing. There's $30 million that that needs to be accounted for in 22 revenues.
Because as it stands right now, that's then the budget is unbalanced. Right?
I don't know if I would use unbalanced, but it it just, it it's it's not as reflective as it could have been.
Okay, why don't we do it this way? I think this is another conversation that we can be at. So that we can, if there's language that's necessary to fix it, we fix it. But I, right now, I'm looking for language that can make it better so that we can ease the the burdens and the suffering of our community on this thing. I'm just trying to find, again, there's two pots of money here. I am really, I would really like to see that this part of money, that this money be taken from this pot, okay? So that in this part, this area, we can be able to address other 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 needs necessary. Nothing that needs to concern Mr. Beneventi or Mr. Charagla or Mr. Missang in here. But but again, I think this is something that we that that that. But, but again, I think this is something that we, that, that still needs to be fed it. And, and really, we have enough time, you know, for the governor to come back and say, you're right, okay, guys, we can take this from the ARP, no need to having this conversation, let's do something else otherwise. But this other one, we, as far as the other conversation, I would rather that we keep it to that conversation on the, on, on helping the community. We can have that as a conversation later, okay? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tello, you have any question for the panel? You'd be the last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A good afternoon to everyone who's here on the panel. Thank you for being here to provide us some answers to some of the questions we have. And definitely, I was glad to hear about getting a, a number for the FY twenty-one excess revenue, um, the audit that's coming out. And if I'm not mistaken, you said thirty, thirty point five million? Is that correct, Mr. Byrne?
The surplus for fiscal twenty-one is thirty-one point nine million.
I'm, I'm sorry, say again?
The surplus for fiscal twenty-one is thirty-one point nine million.
Thirty-one point nine?
The accumulated surplus is thirty point four million.
So you're saying that that's how much we have in the bank right now?
No, that's not the amount we have in the bank. That's the surplus that we have.
Okay, that's a surplus. And we've already expended that surplus from other legislation?
Um, my colleague here is confirming that we did.
So the full amount has been, uh, has been spent already? So we, we're ending with an audit that is really technically, we don't have a surplus to use anymore excess revenue from FY twenty-one, correct?
That's why we started appropriating from fiscal twenty-two.
Okay, now going to fiscal twenty-two, and providing by BBMR provided all these, these bills, you know, um, that are potential bills out, out there and providing some of them that have passed with the public law number and coming up with a subtotal of one hundred and thirty-two million, five hundred seventy-seven and seven hundred and seven dollars uh in subtotal. Is there a reason why you didn't incorporate uh Public Law thirty-six dash fifty-six, which is, which Bill two-one-two with the Healthcare Center Act of thirty-five million? Uh, this is to BBMR, who provided this chart. There's also another bill that is a potential because some of these bills that you provided us are, haven't even passed. They're not law current, currently, but you, you, you were kind enough to include everything that's out there, uh, which also includes Bill number three-one-zero uh dash thirty-six, which is uh the Simon Sanchez bill, which looks like there would be an obligation of about twelve million, but according to the superintendent, but then you corrected him and said it would be eighteen million annually for any kind of debt service with regards to that. Are there a reason why these two are not incorporated into the, your chart?
Thanks for the question, Senator. I was, we were asked by the committee to expedite three twenty-five. I think I just sent the fiscal note for three-ten this morning. So sequentially, uh, the fiscal note for three-ten, even though it's revised, you're correct. Looks like we missed one.
We had a public hearing right for that one, yeah, three-ten.
Yeah, it looks like we missed one.
Sorry?
Looks like we missed one.
I'm so sorry, Lester.
It looks like we missed one.
Okay, what about the, uh, Bill two-one-two dash thirty-six, the Healthcare Center? That, that's thirty-five million annually from the General Fund to cover the Healthcare Center Act, which is Public Law thirty-six dash fifty-six? Is that another one that you missed?
That's for the new hospital?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, uh, I, I, it's kind of like the Simon Sanchez existing appropriation. It's on paper, but the operative word is to pay uh the lease. But if you want to include that too, um, that's fine. I mean, we're just giving you some color. It wasn't meant to be exhaustive and if, I, I will admit that it looks like we missed one. If you want to add that on the list, all it does is...
Yes, so you might want to make an amendment to this fiscal note to include them. I mean, if we're gonna put everything on the table, then might as well put everything because then it gives us a more of a reality of what we're looking at, not just today, not just next month, but in the future. These are numbers that are gonna be, one day become a reality or an expense to our government, um, our government and our taxpayers. You know, it's about looking into the future. Um, we, you know, we're the, I think we're the only jurisdiction that doesn't even have a rainy day fund put in place. Kind of wish you would add that to the list on funding to put into rainy day fund. But, you know, they, we suspended it and I didn't vote for that. But you also mentioned that the law enforcement pay raises, I understand, has been already incorporated in FY twenty-two from the time of its inception and it's been covered. But in FY twenty-three, what is it, um, has that been incorporated in the governor's budget bill to include those raises in FY twenty-three budget?
I answered that question earlier.
Yeah, you said twenty-two.
No, no, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down.
The speaker asked me a pointed question.
Right.
And the speaker's question, one of them, was whether or not the teacher, I mean, the law enforcement pay was gonna be covered in the twenty-three budget. It's already incorporated in what was submitted. That's the answer.
It's already incorporated in the, for twenty-three then, okay.
Executive budget request.
Yeah, and I, I do know it's already, um, covered in FY twenty-two. According to the, when we had a budget hearing, they mentioned that they can cover any raises for FY twenty-two because it wasn't in...
Using, using the ARP funds that are on page one under Public Safety.
To cover for FY twenty-two? But FY twenty-three, like you said, is in the FY twenty-three budget bill. It's already been incorporated, okay? Just wanted to verify that.
Okay.
And, um, uh, Mr. Beneventi, thank you for getting that number because I was texting some people in the real estate industry to find out how many residents would miss out on this opportunity. And it's, it's about two thousand with regards to the, um, meter master when there's only one meter being used. You're, you're looking about two thousand families who would not be avail themselves to this. And if I'm not mistaken, each homeowners association provides a, uh, actually a bill to each resident and it, it could be monitored easily like that. But, um, yeah, it was two thousand, but you, you got me before I could, could bring that up. Um, my colleagues asked many of the questions that I had as well. I just, you know, I think, uh, Mr. Targalov, uh, you know, if this happened to be ARP funding being used, then we have no problems. You know, I mean, we would probably, speaker would probably call a, um, emergency session, but then again, you don't have to. It's as quick as the governor putting out another executive order to provide out of ARP funding, twenty-five million, twenty-six million to cover uh this, this rebate, this power rebate. I mean, it's as quick as tomorrow. She can do it and lo and behold, it's done.
Senator, my comment on that one is that I am not here representing the department, uh, the governor's current administration, but as a retiree and a residential customer for the longest time and then finding myself working over there just to help uh in my particular position, I was tasked to look into land management, uh, DPW, Tomorrow Land Trust, and everything that they control over at the governor, governor's office. But first and foremost, is the disconnection of residential power uh bills that amounted to as much as escalated from a mere five hundred to six thousand dollars. And that is a racking uh task for me. And I thank Mr. Beneventi with the personnel that I work with because I was able to work with them some type of reconnection after making some adjustment as to how they can pay those bills. And mind you, I find it very difficult for some family to come up. If you owe four thousand dollars, you have to pay five, uh, no, excuse me, four thousand dollars, you have to pay two thousand to be reconnected. And then with some help from there, they will have to work with GPA to try and pay that up while they're still trying to pay their current bill. Uh, on top of that, there are residential that have left the house because they have no power and no water. And this is a very concerning issue with our residential for power and water. Similar, some GPA meter, uh, water meter has been disconnected and taken away because to no apparent criminal intent, members of the family reconnected it without approaching GPA or DWA. So I face this problem and that is why I'm here today. What are we gonna do when the power and water are just escalating beyond what is their fix or income? So I come with that in mind. And if there's any solution that will come from this August body or from GPA, then I will welcome that. And maybe there will be some more people to testify because this is what is happening in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Targalov for that. Um, and, you know, we're doing everything we can possible to help and, um, that's, I, I guess that's why the federal government, you know, gave this money, you know, to help our people right now in this really trying time, you know, two years devastation to most families, you know? And it's not gonna pick up as quickly as we'd hope, but in the meantime, we're gonna try and do what we can to assist our community and as fast as we can, as fast as an executive order coming out right now, you know, and providing assistance. We do that with Program Salapi. And, um, if, if that's too much work for the administration to do, well, they're, they can piggyback on the, um, Program Salapi. You've already opened up a, uh, a center, an office for people to come to get assistance. This would be a great opportunity for those coming over and getting vouchers for, um, for power and assist them. Um, Lillian, it was good to see you last night. Enjoyed the music. Uh, Lillian, are the nurses' pay incorporated in your budget bill too? The, uh, nurses' pay raise?
Yes, ma'am.
It has been incorporated. And then secondly, um, Lester, you brought up, um, that sneak peek of the CRER report for the month ending June. Um, I'm looking at the month of May and it's looking like, um, it's dropped in some areas. So if you're looking at the appropriations for individual tax, there is a negative of seven point five million. Um, there's also withholding is down about three hundred and forty-eight thousand. So it's probably a total in, in income taxes about seven point four million negative. And of course, we're looking at the end of an eighty, eighty-five million dollar surplus. But now you're saying in June, we're looking at an increase from that eighty-five to maybe about ninety? And what is that attributing to? And what section of taxes are we seeing that increase happen?
Uh, thank you for that. When we, um, provide you the appropriation allocation report and then we load revenues historically by month, we expect, and that's what's reflected in the CRER, uh, certain revenue marks to be hit. And that's how come we can tell you, um, what we collected versus the adopted level cumulatively to the period. So for the month of May, we had, uh, an amount that was, um, not met for withholding tax. And therefore, cumulatively, the prior report was at eighty-seven million dollars over adopted. The last report's eighty-five million. So there was a, a number that wasn't met and it was attributed to withholding. The sneak peek that I'm giving you because, um, it's not official just yet. It's not the twentieth, but I wanted to give you some comfort in, in your deliberations. And that comfort was that we're ten million dollars better uh than we were the last report. So we'll be, the General Fund will be ninety-five million dollars over adopted levels in the next report at a minimum. I just wanted to make sure you, you didn't come away from our discussions thinking that, uh, there was a downward turn in, um, revenues while you're deliberating this measure, especially if you're going to be deliberating it soon, certainly before the twentieth.
So Lester, do you, um, you're, so when we see the June, we're gonna see that there's an increase going up to about ninety-five million is what you're, what you're saying now?
Cumulatively, yes.
Okay, what about July and August? Do you anticipate any additional increases? Or do you start to see it also falling like we did in May in some areas?
I am not providing a, um, projection. You can see on page three uh that the final column is normally where I would project where we would end up. Um, I didn't want to do that, I don't want to do it simply because, um, we are in, we're so much ahead of General Fund revenues right now that it, it kind of scares me to predict that we may have a hundred million dollars plus of, of General Fund revenues over the adopted level. So I'm, I'm trying to keep my feet on the ground and still reaching for the stars, as Casey Kasem would say. Uh, but it, I, I think it's more beneficial
That's a first.
for policymakers to be able to, um, look at these things from here and now and not... I mean, we're closer to the end of the fiscal year, yes. Uh, can we discuss revenues that were collected? Yes. Versus adopted, yes. But can we project in the next three months where, where that might take us? Um, I, I would, I would, I would think we could probably be better served if you felt more comfortable by seeing the numbers as far, as opposed to a projection. I mean, OFB can do a projection for you uh and it'll probably be over a hundred million dollars.
Thank you, Lester.
And I, I do have one correction, I'm sorry. Um, the Simon's, uh, the, um, Public Law for the Medical Campus, my staff tells me that that was from EITC, so...
Which one, Bill two-one-two, Public Law thirty-six fifty-six?
The thirty-five million dollars, yeah.
Yeah, no, actually, it's two, twofold, uh, threefold. Actually, one is, um, EITC, the second one is, uh, ARP and then the third is the General Fund. Whichever is optional. And of course, we know we couldn't get EITC and ARP is, you know, depending on it, but then on the governor's, uh, providing it. But then every year after, and then you look at the second part of that bill and it says every year after thirty-five million from the General Fund. That's what the bill says.
Again, Senator, uh, we may have missed one, but the, the primary appropriation was from EITC.
Yeah, well, if we do go to the Committee of the Whole, we're probably gonna want an update. And last thing is, Mr. Byrne, you, um, mentioned that the audit report, when, when did you finally provide the documentation uh needed to the OPA? Because from when I got there, I, you know, the law says June thirtieth and I sent you a letter asking what the delay was. Uh, by law, it's supposed to be given by June thirtieth. It wasn't done, I mean, issued out from the OPA. So I did call the OPA's office and ask them, um, what is the delay? Why isn't it out on time, you know, based on the law? He said because DOA, um, asked for a two-week extension because they needed to fix a problem. So when did you finally provide the documentation to, uh, OPA? What, what day was that?
Uh, Senator, I gave you a detailed, you asked for a detailed response to your letter and I responded in, in detail to your letter.
Yeah, I, I just wanted for the record because it was a press release that had gone out. So the public can hear what, what that response was.
So could you, I'm not sure which question you're asking now.
So again, when did you provide? So again, when did you provide the information that OPA was asking for you so they can complete the audit report for FY '21? Did you ask for an extension?
No, I did not ask for an extension.
Oh, okay, now you're saying the OPA is lying?
I told you in the letter that I didn't ask for an extension. I told you in the letter that I got a draft of the single audit report, because the financial statements were already completed for the single audit report on June 30th. Clearly, you cannot respond to 30 findings in a day. So I was asked by the auditors, not by the OPA, but by Deloitte, when I felt comfortable that we would be able to respond to all those items. And I said, it might take up to two weeks. Deloitte then wrote to the OPA. I didn't, I didn't ask for that extension. We then spent the next week compiling the responses to the single audit report, which includes getting responses from a number of different agencies, because they are responsible for responding to findings that, that affect those agencies.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Byrne.
And we finalized that, the, the final answer to everything was done on Monday.
On, on Monday?
On Monday.
Okay, this Monday. Okay, and the very last question. Lester, you might want to also incorporate another piece of legislation that's out there and that's like for one more, though. You might also want to incorporate Bill 321. Okay, it is there, okay, thank you. Okay, got it, thank you. No, I don't, Mr. Chair, and I thank you for the opportunity...
One more clarification. I don't mean to go back and forth with you, Senator, but...
It's okay, I, I'll accept whatever.
I'm reading this fiscal note and it says, "The Bureau notes that there are several proposed legislative measures that seek to utilize the aforementioned excess revenue collected above the adopted level in FY '22." So I stand by the EITC not being included here, because we, we specifically limited the scope of the fiscal note to FY '22.
Okay, yeah. Well, that being said, I thank you again, everyone, for sticking out and, and we're looking forward to, you know, seeing you again during the Committee of the Whole. And if any questions that you weren't able to answer, please provide that during the Committee of the Whole. You have the option, so appreciate, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. And I ask my colleagues that if you have any other questions you'd like, submit it to the committee and we'll provide it to the panel, so they can provide answers before we go to the Committee of the Whole. All right? And then we'll move on from here. And thank you to all present for participating in our, in the hearing today. We've all, we've all have. We have all been challenged by the cost of fuel and as a result, the rising cost of living. These are all beyond our control. This is a global issue. However, what is in our control is the ability to carefully address areas where we can cause a positive effect for our people. Not any single person is safe from the increase and I hope that with this bill, we can provide some form of relief. I look forward to the Speaker's call on special, on the emergency session on this measure, so we can properly deliberate the matter and move forward, move toward more help for our island residents. Thank you again. And I ask that if there are any additional... You, you may submit testimonies and I've, I've asked the, the folks out there at Lupan Cove and all the folks that have those multiple units, submit information so we can consider that. And submit it, the testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenauktion@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. Bill 325, there's 36 hours duly heard by the committee and the public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 4:17. This was most of your attendance and please be safe this weekend. Happy liberation, people of Guam.